My call, this special call meeting today, a joint meeting of the Board of Supervisors and the School Board here today. I'd like to welcome everybody here that's come today. And I would really, I am really appreciative of the School Board coming to our meeting today. It's a welcome sight to see them here and hope to see them here more often.
All right, our meeting today is in person and by electronic format. The meeting for those of you online are at the new, is at the new courthouse complex. The meeting ID is eight nine nine four one five four seven one nine seven. The passcode is six nine three eight nine seven. You can dial by your location at one six four six eight seven six nine nine two three. The Northumberland County School Board will now come to order. We have established a quorum.
All right. Thank you. All right, since this is a meeting for the School Board here to, to present, above, uh, to, to present a folder here to us, I will turn it over to Ms. Christopher.
Okay, this time I'm going to ask Susan Nunn if people take over, Dr. Walker.
Thank you, Mrs. Christopher, and thank you, Mr. Haney. Good evening to our supervisors and to our county administrator and his team. We thank all of you for being with us this evening to review our 2022-2023 budget proposal. So Mr. Bellas is our new finance director. I think it's fitting to introduce him. And Mr. Bellas, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Thank you for welcoming us here tonight. I look forward to working with you all going forward.
And behind Mr. Long, we have Shelley Van Landingham, and she is our clerk of the board. With that said, we will be walking you through the binder that you have at your seats. And I'm going to start with the first two pages, which is the Budget Transmittal Letter. Dear Northumberland County Public Schools School Board and Board of Supervisors, the fiscal year 2022-2023 operational budget is $20,009,189. And this is an increase of $1,186,65 or 5.98%. And the fiscal year 2022-2023 school nutrition budget is $654,162. And that's an increase of $29,451 or 4.71%. The total School Board request, including operational and school nutrition, is $21,566.52, which is an increase of $1,121.16 or 5.94%. The operational budget proposes increases in the essential areas of employee compensation, regional program participation, and increases to supplies, materials, and fuel costs. The fiscal year 2022-23 capital improvement budget requests total $1,618,550. This capital improvement budget prioritizes renovation of the current School Board office for approximately $350,000. Well replacement at NES and the combined NMS and NHS complex. This is required by the Department of Environmental Quality, the DEQ, by 2025 and 2033 respectively, for a total cost of $440,000, $440,000 per well. And replacement of the bus garage roof for a approximation, this cost is $88,550. Also included is the addition of one special education bus at approximately $100,000, as well as two regular passenger buses for $200,000 to keep up to date with the aging transportation fleet. The budget proposal before you includes a 5% salary increase for all employees, plus a 1.25% step increase for scaled employees, and a health insurance increase of 10.5%. The budget proposal includes school administrative assistant positions and finance administrative assistant contracts adjusting from 11 months to 12 months at an increase of $27,000. The proposal also includes athletic and academic stipends on to be competitive with neighboring divisions, and that's at an increase of $110.19. Additional major cost increases include participation in regional programs with a total increase of $37,930. This includes the Northern Neck Technical Center with an increase of $29,614. The Chesapeake Bay Governor's School, and that is at an increase of $8,316. The proposal includes an increase in contract services for Service Master, and that's an increase of $18,245, and changes to the bus driver's pay schedule, and that's at an increase of $23,000. By law, this proposal must be balanced with revenue that equals expenditures. Therefore, this budget proposal relies on additional support from the Commonwealth. The NCPS School Board has engaged in work sessions and has a scheduled public hearing for the proposed budget before you this evening, and that's on this coming Monday, March 14th, 2022. The School Board reviewed budget requests from a variety of stakeholders, including but not limited to students, families, employees, and community members. Our School Board publicly acknowledges and thanks the county administrator, his team, and the Board of Supervisors, who consistently support the school division and generously fund the many programs and instructional initiatives that make NCPS a leading school division in the Northern Neck. This budget's objective is to balance available resources and continue support of important division priorities. With full funding of this proposal, the school division will be able to compensate our current employees with competitive salaries, continue to offer relevant instructional programs, and provide transportation and facilities that are safe and reliable. And that is respectfully submitted to you, our supervisors and county administrator. If you turn the page, you'll see that this binder on, or your review will be referring to the page numbers. There's also a table of contents if you would like to revisit any of the topics presented before you this evening. So I'm going to move quickly on some pages because they're pretty explanatory, and then other pages we'll spend more time on. So Pages two and three acknowledge our School Board and our supervisors, and we appreciate the time you spend in all of your positions. These aren't easy jobs, and we recognize that. So thank you for your service. I'm moving to page four. This is just an overview of budget development practices and an explanation of the legal authority, legal assessment, budget basis, the basis of accounting, the balanced budget process, and budget phases are just briefly outlined for you on, as well as budget planning on page five. If we go to page six, that is a budget calendar process just outline, outlining what our School Board, how, how they go through the process beginning in October and taking us through the March and April period. And then on page seven, we have provided the 2022-2023 budget calendar. And again, we appreciate the meeting today. And then this coming Monday, we'll have a public hearing on the proposed budget. If we go to page eight, you will find funding sources and types. On the first composite index, on, you, you are well aware, Northumberland County on, is required to spend 69 cents in the state about 31 cents due to our LCI, which currently is .6971 for the local composite index. We'll be reviewing on ADM with you, the average daily membership, on a different page. So I'm gonna just go by that quickly because we're about to go in depth with you in a moment. And you also have before you an explanation of the standards of quality. There are two main funding sources for public schools in Virginia. The Commonwealth, representing the state revenue, and the county, obviously representing the local revenue. The State Board of Education establishes educational objectives known as, sometimes you hear the acronym SOQ, and what that stands for is, um, excuse me for a moment. Um, so for the SOQ, that stands for Standards of Quality. These objectives provide the minimum requirements for school divisions to provide programs to achieve high-quality education. This is guided by the Code of Virginia, Section 22.1-253, and it sets the minimum ratio of instructional position and staffing requirement standards required by the SOQs. Revisions or changes to these standards can only be made by the General Assembly. And you're aware that for funding sources of sales tax and the lottery, as well as required local match, on, et cetera. So that's just a brief explanation there. If we turn to page nine, this is the daily membership, and we did a cross comparison with you on, over the years. So the average daily membership for Northumberland, we gave you a snapshot from 2016, leading up to, you know, all the way through each school year to the current. And you can see that we are down some for the 2021-2022 school year. And we're at 1,116 for our ADM. And we do feel that on, because we have been through the pandemic and, you know, we still are on somewhat on, in the pandemic, we did, we have seen in our numbers that our youngest population, our pre-K students as well as our kindergarten students, on those cohorts have been smaller because parents have opted to keep their students at home for right now. And we are, you know, this evening's a prime example. We're having pre-K open house for next school year, and we are hoping to encourage our families to re-enroll their pre-K and kindergarten students. And when you look at our ADM comparison to our neighbors Lancaster, Richmond County, Westmoreland, and you can see a similar, um, fall in ADM for the most part. I'm gonna move to page 10. Page 10 deals with the local composite index comparison. And as I mentioned earlier, Northumberland is .6971. And frequently, we compare ourselves to Lancaster. They're at a .80. And you can see Essex at a .4675, Middlesex, .6324. I skipped Matthews. Is it a .5453? Richmond County, .3411, and Westmoreland at a .4768. If I move to page 11, um, you'll see our regional teacher salary comparison. And if you look at zero, year zero in that first column, Northumberland is at 44,500. And we look really good with our salary comparison this year. If you remember from last year, we were seventh and eighth in the region. So thank you for your full support of, of, you know, making sure we aligned our salaries in a very competitive way. And we broke this out for you by five years of experience, 10 years, 15, 20, up to 30, and that's the teacher salary comparison. Now we're going to go a little bit more in-depth, and so Mr. Bellas, I'm gonna, um, he's gonna be sharing more in-depth information with you. So we're on page 12, Revenue Detail.
Thank you, everyone. As we go through this, we'll start to look at the individual financial details of what we're asking and requesting for. So on page 13, this would be the revenue changes. So we're looking at an additional $285,080 or $80 in sales tax. SLQ funds, $403,806. Incentive programs, $375,664. Categorical programs, 254, and lottery fund accounts for $115,859. For total revenue changes of $1,186,63. Uh, this revenue and budget is not requesting any additional funds this year from the county. You go over to page 14. This is the revenue recapitulation. So this is just showing you those receipts from different categories and showing you the major increases, again, coming from sales tax and state revenue increases. State revenue increasing a total of $895,583, and sales tax, $285,080. Moving on to section three, we will view the expenditure detail. Uh, these, page 16 indicates the major increases in this budget. Uh, 5% step for all employees, $859,383. Regional program increases, Northern Neck Technical Center, 8,316. The Northern Neck Alternative Ed is a decrease because we were required to buy back into the regional program when we went back in. Um, so now it's, it's decreasing back to the annual contribution. That's the same for all the local, localities that are in that, which is about $25,000. Um, the Governor's School, we have 27 slots there. That's an increase of $29,614. Uh, supplies and materials, total 183,654. And the corrected bus driver scale, 23,000. Uh, the school admin assistance and school finance scale adjusted to 12 months from the 11 months to accommodate for the earlier start of the school year. Um, and then the service master contract, these are our main custodial agents that work on our behalf. That's an increase in that contract of $818,245. For a total increase of $1,186,630 of state funds. Moving on to page 17. Uh, this is the School Board Expenditure Recapitulation Detail, showing you by category. Instruction, the biggest category, 73% of our budgets, increasing $878,936. Administration and Health, 6% of the budget, increasing $413. Pupil Transportation, 7% of the budget, increasing $45,953. Operation and Maintenance, 10% of the budget, 182,471 increase, excuse me. Facilities, .4% of the budget, an increase of $3,500. And Technology, 5% of the budget, with an increase of $57,066. Uh, this next page, page 18, just shows these amounts in graph form. So you can kind of get a visual of what those different percentages look like. Instruction, three quarters of the budget, and that's what we expect it to be. Uh, the next page here is showing you the estimated per pupil expenditures based on this budget. Uh, we are currently at $16,279 with an estimated 88 of 1,200. Uh, but the actual ADM for this year is actually quite a bit lower than that. Um, this was an estimated number last year. Um, and so the new budget, 1126, that's more of our ADM currently right now. And that would be that the per pupil expenditures with this proposed budget would be $18,547, of which the local portion would be 11,811. Uh, I'm just gonna kind of quickly go through section four. This is supplemental information. This is all the district salary scales that are provided to you for all the different positions, uh, starting with the teacher salary scale, and then moving through the individual, uh, different positions. And that goes up to page 46. These are all just indicating the salary scale as it stands now and what it would be if we gave the 5% step raise. And I'm scrolling kind of fast for the public, but this is posted on board docs and will be posted on our website as well. Hey, that concludes the regular operational school budget. We'll move on now to section five, which covers the school nutrition budget. Uh, the major increase here is this 5% plus the step for all staff there is a $29,451 increase. Here, we're showing the revenue capitulation from the state, the $29,451 increase. Uh, the next page is the expenditure detail, showing where, where those particular costs are at each school. NES would be an increase of 2,827, NMS would be an increase of 8,904, and NHS would be 8,107, and the district total would be 9,000, or 9,613 with a total of 29,451 increase.
And for our supervisors, we will remain on the community eligibility provision, which means all of our students have breakfast and lunch meals for free.
Moving on to the next page of the budget, on page 51 starts the capital improvement budget, section six. This is a list of all potential possible projects, but we highlighted the ones that we're focusing on for this year in the Budget Transmittal Letter. Um, the one here I like in green, this is one project that we're already undertaking now, uh, using the HVAC S or grant money that came from the state in our SR3 fund match. And I'll show you a little bit more detail of that, but this is going to replace the controller unit uh, for the NMS and NHS HVAC system, which is outdated and, and passed its life of support.
Yes, I invited Jeff Barran, and I have my back to the audience. I provide, I apologize to the audience. We just don't have a lot of room up here. However, do I have Jeff Barran? Jeff, will you please, um, come and present your information? Thank you, and thank you to everyone who's here this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll give a few minutes to speak. These folks have touched base on a lot of the topics that I'm responsible for already. I'll just give a brief explanation of what we've done to this point with a lot of these capitalized items. Um, and I'll start, we'll get to that actual control system, give explanation on what's going on with that. But I'm gonna start real quick with our status on the NES roof replacement. Currently, we are exactly 90% complete. Delays occurred due to the availability of the TPO roof material and ISO, ISO insulation back, flat roof section. Flat roof section is what we're working on right now. All pitched roofs have their metal installed, and they are complete. And I will say we have zero leaks in or out of perimeter of the building right now. All the support curves from the old RTUs that we replaced with the new rooftop units, the HVAC units, have been removed, uh, and they've isolated several other key leak points that the building was suffering from. Uh, now we have a flat roof there that has no appendages. The rocks that were removed from the roof are going to be distributed around the campus for erosion prevention that we've had. And specific areas would be our well water areas, the well houses, some of our athletic fields, things of that nature. I really don't know the tonnage of rocks we've taken off, but it's been the equivalent of about four semi-truck loads. So we have a ton of rocks out there. The only area left that needs to be completed on this project is the gym. And currently, we're making a shooting system to come off on the west end of it to take the remainder of the rocks, get the old substrate, the rubber roof material off, and get the new TPO material installed. Once that's done, we do the final inspection, sign off, this contract will be complete. Um, maintenance department has been involved in a lighting and electrical upgrade at our NU CPS bus facility, the bus shop. The bus shop is one of our older facilities and is in dire need of a lot of upgrades. Uh, two key points is the roof and the electrical. Uh, with the electrical, one of the key points we're doing is rewiring all the lighting uh, in specific areas of the bus shop where our technicians were. It's kind of dark. It is, it poses a, a, a safety issue. Uh, we, we've replaced all of the sodium alloy fixtures, the T12 fluorescent bulbs with all LED fixtures. Uh, it's much brighter in there. It makes a much safer environment. We, uh, to add to that, the cost savings, uh, with the energy bill, we're kind of excited to see how that's gonna turn out. We do have some more lighting that we want to replace in the facilities, and that's in the near future. And we've also added exterior lighting that the facility never had for the safety of our bus drivers, as well as anybody that's down at the building stations. Let's see, to this date, uh, there's no, I got that. In order to preserve longevity of the facility, the roof, uh, is gonna need major repairs. We have had one proposal that's given to us, just talking with Colonial Roofing, came to the total of $88,550 for full roof replacement and the replacement of metal flashing on the exterior. Let's see, the exterior fence of that facility is really in dire need of replacement, especially on the back end. It poses a security issue as, uh, some areas, it's fallen down to a point where the pipes coming out of the ground, holding it are still rotten. When we try to put it back up, it's falling back over. Poses the potential of somebody getting into the premises when we're not there. We have fuel on site, things like that. Uh, we don't want anybody trying to steal or any other issue that night. We also conducted some inspections on our 25-ton bus lift. The company that came in said it's beyond its service life. We've gone ahead and put funds towards the purchase of a new bus lift, which is a 30-ton bus lift. It's gonna be much more safer for these individuals. However, due to the issues with supply of materials, it's taken five months for this thing to get fabricated. Right now, we're looking at around the first week of May for delivery of this piece of equipment. Both, uh, major, the tall doors on the bus shop, they failed inspection. Uh, the, the spring assemblies, uh, the actual motors and everything did pass. However, the doors themselves, the deterioration is beyond repair. We have ordered the materials to build the doors, and hopefully within the next month, these doors will be installed, and those will be safer for these folks to wear. Uh, I'm gonna move on now to, uh, they spoke about the wells. Uh, we do have an update on the actual date. Uh, one of my counterparts in my shop, and I've looked at our permit, permit, it specifically say from the date of the start of that permit, we have nine years to fix the first well. Uh, so that puts us at a date of March 1st, 2026, to have the first well redupped due to the lack of routing. We're looking at both of them assessing the age of the elementary school, being much older, and the condition of the facility and the well itself. We highly recommend that the elementary school well be the first one we address with this situation. This is a D, Public Environmental Party mandate. There's several folks around, especially this region of Virginia, that are affected by it. It's unfortunately something we can't go against them on. And I think that's all I have on that. Uh, see, the NMS, uh, the middle school and high school building, lighting and HVAC control system that they spoke about earlier, specifically that one there. This is just like the sit, the situation we have at the elementary school with the controllers there. It's what they call a Java application control engine, Jace system. The old R2 system we removed from the elementary school is still in place at the high school. Uh, one of the key reasons we need to get rid of this system is because the, if one of those controllers goes down, we don't have means of backup. We lose all control of lighting in that facility, as well as control of our HVAC systems. With this building, we have five of those in place. The elementary school, we have one. One of the problems that we have also is the other school, if y'all remember, we updated the pneumatic controls to digital when we put those four systems, new HVAC systems in. This facility is a digital system. However, it runs off of a lawn-based network. We're going to a We're going to a back net system, which will allow us the opportunity to use the cloud to back up these controllers if one controller goes down. We can also safely take from five controllers in the system, take it down to three, which makes it a less expensive control system that has way more features. We can also control this from remote areas too, just like we can at elementary school. Say if I'm up in Richmond with the fam or something, we having a long go off, we lose lighting, I have the potential actually to use my cell phone to make corrections. If not, then we come on site, we're on site, sir. And basically, you know, the obsoleteness of all of it, I can't even get the parts for our local controllers in each classroom. They went from $140 a piece to about $980 a piece, and that's used, and we can't even find those now. Let's see, school track. I was asked by our administration in high school to try to point this out. We are getting some severe delamination of the rubber material on the track. We also are in need of restriping of this said rubber material. It, you can't even see the stripes anymore from the bleacher areas. The sun is really hampered it over time. And I'd probably say we've gotten good in our shop at doing patchwork on this rubber material, but now some of the delamination has gotten in diameter more than 10 feet where you can actually pull it off the concrete. It's about time to have this surface redone. I do not have prices on that, but we do have an engineer coming out to give us an assessment on this, to kind of get an idea of what direction we need to go in the future. All parking lots, we did an assessment of the blacktops. We are in need of blacktop resealing, not resurfacing. We have some cracks that need replacement due to or repair due to ice underneath the, the surface. It is minor, but however, our elementary school is most in need of that. We're going to start researching to see if there's any local companies that can do it at a reasonable price. My concern with the cost of things these days that it might be substantial. And I will reach out to everybody once I start getting costs on that repair as well. The middle school gym floor is really in need of re-sanding, resealing, and restriping. We're starting to get delamination on that actual ceiling on there. It's starting to become a safety issue, and it's causing swelling in some of the plank wood, especially to the outside due to moisture getting to that floating floor. We've already done it to the high school. The high school was a much larger surface. We got it done in two weeks. I can see this one getting done in about a week's time. I will be getting several people come in, give me some quotes, and go as per the Virginia High School League regulations of what colors we have for the stripes for basketball, volleyball, and other activities. So that will get us into compliance. Lastly, NES, the elementary school. I've spoken before about our carpet in the building and how it's been deteriorating over the past 26 years. We still have some classrooms that have carpet from the first day that school opened its doors. Last summer, we made a valiant effort to replace some of the carpet with carpet again, especially in the pre-K areas where these younger kids crawl on the floors. They spend a lot of time on the floor surface. And we also did some vinyl plank replacement in some rooms. It was kind of a success, however, with that plank, it was very expensive. We're looking at other options for the future of the school to move away from carpet in some of them. One, due to health concerns, two, the cost of carpet is getting outrageous. We're actually going to look at what Montrus, the new high school in Westmoreland is doing. One of the things a lot of schools are going to is polished concrete. That's an option. It's got a longer longevity. And we're also trying to get away from the stripping and waxing floors in these schools. It's outrageous the cost we're putting into it with time, labor, and materials. And that's, that's where, that's something we could put discussed evidence to a much more urgent need like sanitation, things like that. That's all I have right now. See if I have any questions for me?
Do the board members have any questions? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Burn.
Specifically, why the wells? What's DQ's issue with the well?
So, we've talked to several representatives with them, and when the construction of these wells took place, even the newer school, it was a grouting issue. What they did instead of grouting down a certain percentage of this well in the dig, they actually backfilled with the existing soil they pulled up. The problem we have around here is that we have several tri- like aquifers underground, and it's a cross-contamination issue. So we pull from what they call the middle atomic reagent. You have an upper atomic aquifer. Right now, we have the potential of cross-contaminating between the two aquifers, something that DQ is, their goal is to prevent. Without the proper grouting, if it's certain levels, we have some sort of contaminant come in from the ground, set from the road or wherever, we wouldn't be in compliance. And that's one thing that they want to prevent, and the only way is to abandon that well and redo it. It doesn't necessarily impede on the existing structures of where we have our well houses. It's just the actual well itself has to be redone.
Did the original requirements at the time the school was built require grouting?
They did not, because the actual cross-contamination issue was not a big concern. And I honestly can't say where this issue started, but it was an issue in certain regions of the state, and they're trying to prevent it from happening anymore.
I know if a homeowner wants to put in a well, depending upon type of well, they've got to do grouting.
Absolutely. And most everyone now gets that process. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Burn.
Moving on next is section seven on page 53. This is some information on our transportation fleet. This kind of gives you a detail of all the different buses and vans and cars that the district currently owns and operates, and it gives you sort of their mileage breakdown. You can see a lot of our buses are getting in the, the 200-plus thousand miles. We only have a few newer buses that we've acquired that have less than, I'd say 50,000 miles on it. Only three buses. So our transportation fleet is getting pretty poor in terms of their mileage. Same thing with some of the vehicles. You can see some of the vehicles here have pretty high mileage on them as well. We have replaced one bus and several vehicles with S or funds. Did you want to?
We have our director of transportation, Stacy Brandon, here this evening. I'm not sure if you have questions or if you'd like us to continue with the presentation.
Any board members have any questions? Just say your person, two buses, or three.
Yes, sir. On the budget proposal before you this evening, there is a request for one special education bus and two regular passenger buses, and that's a total of $300,000 approximately. It's on that chart, I think it's page, page 54.
Looks like 29 buses total.
Good job, Mrs. Christopher.
Good. Any other questions about the transportation fleet?
Do you double up the kids?
We changed from having an elementary run, you know, everybody was separate. Now we are together, and we felt like that was an efficiency that would save money. And it has been, it's been working well. I can't sit here and say it's perfect, but when things come up, we address them. We do have the younger children sit in the front of the bus for the most part, and then the middle and high might be mid-range into the back. And we do have cameras on our buses.
And the final part of our budget presentation tonight is on page, it starts on page 56 as a section eight, and I'm going to go over and review the SR monies that we've received from the SR grants and give you kind of an overview of what these funds are being expended on and how we're using these funds. It's important to realize, to understand that these funds are, are to be used to support COVID mitigation, that we can't use any of these funds to supplant our current budget, meaning we can't use these funds to fund operational expenses. We have to use these solely to fund either one-time same things that capital expenses that are needed to address COVID or instructional type of things that have occurred as a result of the pandemic that require additional resources to meet the needs. On page 57, I give you an overview of the SR three budget. In the original column was what the original posed that came from the state. But when the final budget came down and was approved and awarded to each district, the revised numbers are shown there in yellow. We had a total of the SR grant of $3,484,967.77. We were required to set aside 20% of that budget for instructional, which came out to a little less than $700,000. The majority of these funds are being, were expended on capital needs and things that were one-time expenses. The NES roof replacement was $860,000. The fire pump replacement for our fire system was $54,007.20. We've earmarked $1.5 million of these funds to construct the JRTC Athletic Construction Building that we're currently working with Conamara Construction on. The HVAC grant, we rewarded an HVAC grant separate from this, but we have to use a 100% local match of that, and that's what this $240,975 represents. We're going to use SR as our local match, which is allowed under that grant. And this is the money that we're using to replace that controller system at the middle and high school. The bus garage doors and lift, that was a total estimated at $132,192.2. Those were the parts of the budget that were set aside for capital types of projects. The remaining[1317.54][1317.55]$696,793.55 was this 20% structural set aside. We've earmarked 150,000, or excuse me, $208,773 of that, and that went to the staff $1,000 COVID premium pay that was paid out in December of 2021. With that, the benefits associated with that $1,000 supplement were $13,950. Other fringe benefits associated with that pay totaled $3,277. Technology E process implementation, we're in the process of updating some of our internal processes to allow for our vendors and stuff to be paid electronically, as well as internally through HR to have all our contracts and internal services done electronically. We've earmarked $50,000 over the two years to implement those and bring those processes into the district. Software and technology hardware and technology services, we're in the process of upgrading a lot of their technology and network and internet service provider from the current one gig to 10 gig speed to meet the demand of all the devices that we currently have now. And so that's what these funds are going to be earmarked and used to work. And finally, the remaining amount of $220,793.55 is to cover instructional supplies through 2025, 2025, when this grant expires. The next page kind of breaks down the details of this budget. This is awarded in different categories. The object code 1,000, this is the, basically the salaries and staff code. This is what the COVID premium pay was paid out of. We've expended all that particular line, so those have zero funds remaining. Object code 3,000, these are contract services, and so we're dealing with the E process implementation there. We've worked on, we paid for the legal work for that. That was $4,000. The HVAC match grant here, the other $240,975, and the E process balance remaining to implement the rest of that. So we've spent a total here of $290,975, and it leaves a remaining balance in that category of $200,000. The next one is an instructional supplies for this category, 6,000. We have not expended any funds of the SR three because we are currently expending instructional monies from the SR two budget. Moving on to object code 8,000. This is covering the contract services for the NES roof replacement, the bus garage, lift, and doors, and the fire pump. We've spent $810,790.20. The items in green indicate that these items have already been paid and reimbursed to the county through the mega system. So those funds have already returned to the county. All these funds are required to be expended upfront, and then we file a reimbursement, and then it comes back to the county through reimbursement. So currently, the remaining balance of SR three is $1,735.49 and $2.492. And again, that is to be used through fiscal year 2025. Moving on to the next page here, we have our SR two budget detail. This is the main pot of money we're using now for instructional supplies and other expenses related to ongoing COVID mitigation. Again, object code 1,000 is salaries. We expended approximately $181,374 last summer, June and July. Those were the summer pay for the summer school programs. Again, object code 2,000 represents the benefits associated with that summer pay. In the 1,000, we, 1,000 object code, we have $229,481 remaining. In the object code 2,000, we have $16,196.32 remaining. Object code 3,000, this is mainly where we're looking at all of our contract services, technology. You can see some of the things, the virtual Virginia, that's covering our virtual students who are currently doing virtual learning through Virtual Virginia for the spring. These other E hall passes, this is electronic passes at the hall that the high school is currently using as a pilot program. Envision math is a math program to support math deficiencies associated with COVID. Same thing with lit, I let, that's to, for reading. The other things there, again, more testing or programs to prepare students to mitigate the COVID learning losses. And finally, the Northern Ex Soft Wash there, that was the sanitation and the mold remediation from the exterior at the elementary school after the roof was replaced. We've spent $65,116.59 of that category and remain $67,633.41. Object code 5,000, this is technology services. We've spent mainly in this category on hotspots, $11,605.8. We have a remaining balance of $138,394.92. Object code 6,000, again, more, this is the technology and operational maintenance. We've expended on, from Amazon techno, technology hardware and materials for virtual work for $3,171.66. We replaced the band uniforms that were on the capital improvement project last year using these funds for $24,755. Other general supplies, sanitation supplies, masks, things like that. Gov connections, these represent the, the one-to-one student Chromebooks that were purchased. The other ones there are pretty self-explanatory COVID banners for the COVID testing, things that we've been doing on the Saturdays. And again, extra furniture and things that were needed for the schools to relate to the social distancing requirements. Finally, in category 8,000 here under SR two, we've done some additional work to install electrical work, to install the new oven circuits at the elementary school and the new walk-in fridge. We will be using these funds to replace some of the cafe service lines as well. Those have been ordered, and but are waiting for those to come in to be installed. Uh, we had athletic bleachers that needed to be repaired. Those were inspected, they failed inspection, and so we had to have those serviced and repaired. Uh, we used S R funds for that, that was sixteen thousand, seven thirty. As we mentioned, we replaced the bus garage doors, uh, sixteen thousand, three forty-eighty-two. Uh, we've installed metal detectors at our middle school and high school and elementary school, and those are currently in a pilot and we're getting those off the ground. That was eighteen thousand, eight oh four, eighty-three. And we, uh, replaced the HVAC systems this past summer at the bus garage, uh, for twenty-seven thousand, eight eighty-three. Uh, we've spent a total of one hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and seventy-five cents, and remaining in that category is three hundred and forty-one thousand, ninety-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Um, and that concludes the S R one and S R budgets. Um, the original S R budget of S R one, that was all spent on, uh, technology one-to-one and the, uh, controllers that went into our buses in hotspots. And that concludes our budget presentation. We will open, any questions you all may have or comments?
Yeah. How about the, you know, O T C bill? That in progress?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. We're in the process of meeting with Cona Mayor on that and finalizing contract details and building details.
Okay. And for the governor's group, you say we have twenty-seven spots?
Twenty-seven, yes, sir. Um, we tried to look at the cohort, I can't say that we'll always have twenty-seven, but if the need is there for twenty-seven, you know, I feel like that's probably the highest that we would go, but if we don't have a need for those slots, we would decrease. But at this time, we do.
Okay, I know we lost, um, since we was in elementary, this is COVID, but how about homeschooling?
We have about, I would say approximately ninety students who are being homeschooled, and that is higher than normal. And, um, again, usually when these requests came in this year, it was due to the ongoing pandemic and parents just were not comfortable, um, in some cases of, you know, they weren't comfortable sending their, their student for in-person learning. Um, please be aware, as I'm sure you are on our website, we track our COVID nineteen, we track it by students as well as staff, and it's broken down by schools, by transportation, et cetera. So parents can see on a daily basis what is happening in the schools with COVID. Um, I want to do a public thank you to Shelley Van Landingham. She actually helps us with that COVID dashboard, and she is our person who works with the Department of Health, um, in the Three Rivers Health District to make sure that, um, we're quarantining when we need to.
And, and the last question, uh, does the state require any new courses for the coming year?
Um, you know, we, we work with the Virginia Department of Education, and they will release, um, updates for any required courses. Um, there, there has been some revision to some standards of learning, um, but we can bring you more information on that, Mr. Long. I honestly did not bring that this evening due to our budget theme. Thank you, great questions.
Well, you're proposing a five percent salary increase to all employees, plus a one point two five, that's a scaled employees. Who is not scaled?
Uh, majority would be people that are either part-time or hourly employees. Um, you can see the different scales you have there, we almost have a s-
I was wondering, who was not scaled?
We do have a scale for almost, most positions, but it would mostly be part-time, hourly positions and things like that.
And substitutes.
Substitutes. So you'd be looking at maybe some people in, uh, custodial, um, caf, cafeterias, food nutrition, uh, those, I, those areas would be the main areas that would be non, uh,
Scale.
Scaled positions. Any other questions?
Hang on.
Comments?
If one thought the Northern X alternative, if you said you're not doing that, that was seventy-eight thousand.
Uh, that's, it's reduced this year because in the past, the past few years, we had, it was a high buyback into that program. Now we're going back this year to the, the normal regional, uh, contribution that all counties contribute.
Is that a savings of seventy-eight thousand?
Yes.
Or it's not a cost?
That's a reduction.
I just want to make, yeah, because-
It was approximately eighty-four thousand dollars last year, I believe, that we had to pay, and now, like I said, it's being reduced back to the normal contribution level that the district would play.
Someone was part of a technical, uh, alternative program, pulled out, went, handled it locally, and then to get back in, you had to pay the money.
Correct.
And my next one, next question was, does the school system have some of their own janitorial?
What we did, um, so, great question, Mr. Brand. A couple of years ago, and it was probably beginning of COVID, um, we did, we were having a lot of challenges with disinfection, sanitizing, just general cleanliness. So we did decide to, um, go into a contract with Service Master. Um, we know that a lot of our employees, our custodial employees were long-term employees for Northumberland County Schools. Um, as a result, we did a hybrid model where we grandfathered in those employees, um, as a Northumberland County School employee, but once retirements happened and/or, um, resignation, Service Master then would supply, um, their, their staff, and we no longer, um, would have them on our payroll. But we did that, that out of a courtesy to our employees. Um, you know, they were going to, their retirement would have been affected, all kinds of things would have been affected. Um, so we didn't want to leave them in that way.
How long is the contract with Service?
Um, right now, they just, I'd have to look at the contract, have you looked at it?
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure right offhand, I think it was a three- or five-year contract.
I was just wondering-
I'd have to look at it specifically.
When, you know, if they're going up eighteen thousand dollars, why not?
Yeah.
Put it in for bid? And anywhere goes from there, but I, I don't know you, the contract detail.
Sure, and that's a good suggestion, um, and I'm open to suggestions. It is hard to find custodians in this area, um, not only if, you know, for us as a school division, but also, you know, even Service Master sometimes has difficulty. Um, we do feel, and I'm not saying that the Service Master situation is perfect, but our buildings are cleaner now than they were before. So, um, and that's, that's very appropriate considering everything we've been through with the pandemic. So, um, you know, you're always welcome to come and see that process. Uh, we are pleased with Service Master.
Do you anticipate any reduction in their contract with the declining COVID? And hopefully disappearance of all practical purposes of COVID? Or is this going to be basically your base price for custodial type one?
I think our challenge is the rising prices of the costs that all of it, you know, just everyone is facing, um, so I can keep you posted on that.
I would say that that's kind of our, the base price, this contract price, we did have additional cleanings and things that were required under the COVID mitigation, but, uh, those were additional costs above that. Those things have all been paid out of S R funded as well. Any other questions?
I just noticed, um, your average day of attendance is going down right much, almost about eight percent, seven, eight percent of this year.
It's, uh, we did have quite a bit of drop in the A D M, and, uh, largely that is again related to the COVID decline over the last year. Uh, the A D M that was estimated last year, twelve hundred, we didn't, we never actually achieved that, it was actually less than that.
For this, that twelve hundred, in the last year, you said they were already a hundred, you got another seventy-five, you think going to homeschool this year?
Well, for, you mean for the coming year? Right now, we have about ninety students on homeschool.
All right, well, get twelve hundred A D M this year. Yeah. What page was the A D M on?
It's early on.
And you're showing eleven twenty-six predicted on those, that's for next year. Expecting to lose another?
We're hoping to bring students back, actually. We, we're hoping to re-enroll the students who stayed home because of COVID. We're hoping that because hopefully pandemic numbers, um, decrease, um-
Last year's budget was based on twelve hundred, but the A D M actually from the state came in at eleven eighty-nine, that's what that, that was the official one, the twelve hundred that was presented in the budget was in Aston.
Twenty twenty-one, same thing last year.
And then, uh, it, it's gone down to eleven, one thousand, one hundred and sixteen currently. That's the number that this budget was estimated off of from the state.
Excuse me, so your A D, A D M is one thousand, one hundred and sixteen?
Yes. That's the current estimation as of right now.
Okay.
What did you estimate next year? Giving you figures?
Um, I figured it on that. I've estimated that, I, I'd love to do that if we don't, not sure how many might come back at this point. This is what, uh, when we did the state budget worksheet, this was the state number that they suggested that we use, so I didn't change that.
What you did say, you want to try do some thing to ensure the firm's-
Yeah, hopefully as the pandemic continues to wane and people will continue to try to get their kids back in school, I would imagine, because it's been a very disruptive time, both for public schools, but families as well. I mean, this was a very challenging time on families to have their kids out of school a lot.
Anyone else have any questions? Mr. Padlock, Mr. Mason, you have any questions?
I, I don't have any questions, uh, particularly to the, the budget itself, but, uh, would it be possible to get a visual copy of this so that we can put it on our board?
Yes. No problem.
One thing I would suggest in the future, a fumble, make the fumble color green.
Where was that at?
It's on your cover page, it's turquoise.
Lancaster just happens to be red for some reason.
At least it's not red, right?
Ironically, it was, it's really funny because it's green when I, on the screen, but when it scans and then printed on the paper, it turned more blue.
That was a good suggestion, thank you.
It's green and gold are the colors.
So Jason's new, and I did notice the turquoise, and I didn't bring it up, I'm sorry. I probably showed up.
I did notice in the school board report, you had ten kids that won a contest. Congratulations then.
Thank you.
I would love to see the work that they've done.
The artwork? Okay. I can work on that. And we brought all of you a gift, if you'd like to open it at the same time, it's a surprise gift.
Yeah, thank you for the gift, thank you for the getter.
Thank you for the time tonight, and thank you for y'all's continued support of the school system.
And also thank you, uh, Dr. Worga, Mr. Bellows, thank you for a nice presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It should be a feather in all of our caps that we have one of the best school systems in the region.
Nice. Thank you very much.
Who am I like to say in that?
I think-
That's coming from a Lancaster guy.
I know, I know.
Mr. Tyler, this surprise gift, so Mr. Bellows actually picked it out and noticed it is burning gold for that particular ride. So he, he did good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, now.
Do we have to close the meeting, Mrs. Christopher?
Okay. At five thirty-seven, I make a motion that we adjourn, do a head second?
Second.
Vote?
Aye.
All right. Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you.
All right, can I have a motion to close this, this meeting? I have a motion, a second to close it. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor say aye?
No.
Aye.
At least.